The camera is recording it, that one is recording it. That's going to go on YouTube, isn't it?
It will be, yeah, your confession.
Yeah, I know. Best to be honest.
Yeah, it's nice. Uh, right, oh Joyce. Yeah.
Do we need this projector on now, Alison?
Well, put it on, it's warmed up.
That's what I thought, because it takes a bit of time.
So old.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, it is now ten thirty-four. Uh, we're going through apologies, everybody's here, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah, um, there's no apologies to be approved. Declaration of interest, has anybody got? Any disclosable pecuniary interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda?
I declare on item number six, as the applicant is known to me, and we'll start with that.
Okay, I also declare the same. Any other interests? Listening from, listening from Michael.
In that case, then we'll, we'll discuss it. But you two aren't.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, any other interests that may have in respect, that may have in respect to the items on the agenda?
No.
Right, minutes from the last meeting. Everybody read and digested the minutes from the last meeting? Yeah. Um, any problems? Would somebody like to propose the minutes, please? Proposed by Paul, seconded by Martin. All those in favour? Karen, you know us, thank you very much.
Let's move this handbag out of the way, please.
Easy. Man bag.
Man bag.
Cool. Righty, how are my applications to consider? First one, number one on the, um, agenda is Mrs Hicks, horse chestnut justment to house has, horse chestnut adjacent to the house even, has to be tipped back from the property to maximize the maximum of three metres. Um, where possible phone line to be cleared and all, and all around lift of four point five metres, twenty-three South Street.
Oh, who is these?
That's one of those. Everybody familiar with the location? That's the South Street?
Yeah.
Indeed, it hits the most extraordinary proposition.
I know.
When I stood by it last night, it's one of the biggest horse chestnut you'll ever see.
Quite creepy.
Hmm.
Why? The house lies among the stores, the house, but we can't go there. Right, anybody got, would like to open this one up for discussion, please?
Do we have any, uh, report from our tree warder?
Please. Right, the one, a very large tree at the junction of Penn Street and South Street. It adds greatly to the scene, street scene. I suppose all residents, actually she's, has come to say about CCTV pole, has no problem either with the tree surgery or the pole. I suggest, we recommend approval, uh, as stated on the proposals. So that's what Joyce has got regarding the South Street one.
Do you really mean lift as in lift the tree out from the roof?
No, lift as in cut it, I assume, that's all. If this comes from our CC, lift would be, take the...
The lower branch of the tree, yeah.
Not lift the, not lift the...
It's lift the actual, um, shape.
The foliage.
Yeah.
This is what should be happening to the jubilee oaks and cuts close, so they don't become bush-like.
Yeah. So it maintains a tree structure and shape, rather than as an artist...
It's really, yeah, do you care if she shows the photo? I think if you look at the bottom part of it, it's getting quite overhyped.
Yeah.
I think that's the point, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, it's this bottom bit.
Yeah.
It's usually, just to, yeah, it's just, it's a fantastic tree.
She's a case of telling you, well, that's all. I propose we, um, recommend approval.
Thank you very much, um, would somebody like to second that? Seconded by Michael, and all those in favour? That is passed, thank you very much. The next one is fell number, or fell one, silver oak tree. And this is to the rear of, um...
Can I get a seat at this?
High Street, no, there isn't a photo, where's that photo gone?
The address on the table.
No.
I assumed it was the dentist.
Right, yeah. So that is from the rear.
Pass it round.
Pass it round, yeah. That's from the rear, right.
What's the address?
The address is seventy-four High Street, so that photo is taken from...
About the same size as the hornblower.
Right. So it's the rear of the Georgian terrace. Um... That photo is taken from, it's not New Street, it's the other one.
John Street.
John Street, that's the one.
So that's the back of that terrace?
Yeah. Right, Joyce has mentioned this one, although this tree is the rear of the property and adds greatly to the street scene, if this tree is felled, then the house in John Street will be looking at the rear of the property of the High Street. I strongly advise the retention of this lovely tree and recommend it to be tipped back by two metres. Uh, and no more.
It just needs shaping.
Yeah, it needs, uh, it needs professional in there to bring it in order.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
Could I ask a question, Mr Chairman? Do we know why Mr, with the, once it fell, is it because he doesn't think it's safe? Is it because, uh, it cuts out too much light? Do you have any idea what he's arguing about?
Please block out any sunshine.
I think there's a, yeah, there's some rationale behind it.
They're basically just to block out any sunshine. And please, the tree should be suited to the location.
This is understandable, because that is south facing, yeah. Are we still, can I have a look at the picture?
It's quite a quash from the rear of that terrace, isn't it?
Hmm, they're very long gardens, and that really is like from that photo, that that's up at the back of the garden.
But that's probably his argument, Michael, the fact, exactly, if he's sitting in his garden and not shedding out all his light. I've had the same argument, the allowance behind me, because they're, they're fancy lots of seventeen feet. I was getting other than that garden, but now I've put it down, it's a tremendous difference. So I suppose, I know I've not been there, and they're supposed to be enough, but that's probably his reason, these things, is it getting sunshine?
That's why it just needs pruning, as perhaps Joyce uses the technical term, but I, I don't really think that it needs felling.
I don't think it needs felling, but it is out of control. It looks as if it's not been maintained for some time. My personal view is to maintain the structure of the tree, but to reduce its size by probably about fifty percent, which will then enable some sunshine and maintain the street view and, um...
It's fifty percent two metres, that Joyce said.
I don't think, no, I don't think Joyce...
She says two, yes.
She said maximum two.
She said by two metres and no more.
Would that produce a shadow, if there was a shadow, in effect, quite dramatically in the two metres? Because the garden's probably only about six, isn't it? No longer than six, but it would...
So the recommendation is by two metres, um, any other sort of, I personally think should be a bit more, but...
It's a difficult one, I mean, this is, I have the same problem with my back garden, so I can sympathise with Mr Lewis, I mean, sit down. I, I see one of these people, I see, um, trouble and trees taken down, that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a difficult one. If it can be reshaped and, um, allow more light into the garden, I'd rather retain it than not.
Yes.
That's the point.
Perhaps we shouldn't specify the specific height, because obviously he would need someone to survey it and, and we could just specify, if that's the people's views, that it is just looked at and...
We can refuse the...
We'll refuse, no.
The recommending.
That recommend, if I'm permitted to propose it.
Shape and size.
Yeah. Is that proposal, Martin?
If that's permitted, I would make a proposal that would refuse felling and, um, consideration is made for the reduction and shape of the tree.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favour? Right. Right, number three, change...
These glasses are great.
It's been shrugging, just can't see them shrugging. Really have shrugging there. They're very focals and they're not working very well. Uh, change of use from A1 Retail to Suzie... How did you pronounce that?
Generous.
Generous.
Sui.
Sui, Generous, dog grooming, no physical change to the building, unit seven, um, NJD Enterprises Limited, Knights' Yard, Gold Street. Jail Street, even.
Is she the lady that's currently in the, the old toilets?
I think it's really, yeah, it's really small in there, because I would frequently go. And yeah, it is, it's quite, she's got it really nice, um, and it is really small. It's just one room, basically.
Yeah. I think for a positive point, I walked into that before, and clever shops just off Jail Street, it's looking nearly sound as well, because there are two or three properties empty, so anything that can improve it, to get some sort of business in there, people all going through there, it's going to be a positive.
Yeah. The thing is, I don't even, I go to Hamilton, that's about as far as I go, don't even go in there, so people...
I have to go in there deliberately.
Deliberately, so, and they'll be, and because she's always so busy, then, then it might encourage people to go in there.
The only concern, I mean, it's my personal view, is, is the actual, where do the clients park to drop off the, um, the dogs? That's my only concern.
Take them in, walk them in.
Well, what would hope so?
It's all, it's all logical answers, isn't it? Yes, that's good.
My, my concern on this was that, um, if we are to implement a neighbourhood plan, um, part of that thing which is on the report later this week is preserving retail units. And I always find that we get moaned at the fact that we don't, um, permit certain shops, which we don't have the authority to decide what goes in what, but this is our only chance to preserve a retail unit. But I'm a bit sort of torn, because that retail unit's been empty for over a year.
And it's still standing, yeah.
But then if you take it away, you then have the difficulty that it can then no longer be used for retail. If the dog place goes, then somebody's got to go through the process of reapplying and all that. Um, it's, it's an unfortunate location as well. I don't think they should have ever enclosed it, I know they sort of went on a similar footprint of what was there. It would have been better if Hamilton's shop wasn't where it was, and it was a nice, and we perhaps wouldn't have the empty unit.
Confronted.
Because most arcades like that sort of thing always suffer, wherever you are in the country, if people want to walk through somewhere, rather than into somewhere. Um, so I'm, I'm a bit minded, what I actually do even now, because some people have said to me, well, it's better than having it empty, but on the other hand, some people think, no, because it should be retail. But it has been on the market for some considerable time. Uh, I also have slight concern for some of the people who sit there quite comfortably trading, how happy they would be to have dogs running around in the courtyard, and as well as the parking issues, so...
Don't you think that they'll be bringing around?
I don't know, because if you, if you walk back past, I'm sorry, if you walk past the one in the passage shop, there's always needing times when there are dogs around.
No, no, I don't know, problems with one stand.
So the proposal is, going back to the agenda, change of use from A1 Retail to dog grooming. Uh, no physical changes to the building, so in your view of, um, you know, if somebody else change, uh, goes into that unit, there's no physical change actually going to take, take to the unit, therefore, it would just require a change of use back to its original status. So for me, I would be more than happy to...
I understand that, but there's been a lot of change of use and a lot of retail units have been lost and, and we don't know how the, the economic climate is going to change in the next few years. And we've lost some prime locations in Mill Street, Financial Estate Agents, and I think, personal view, thinking of it, the way of shopping is going to come back to the High Street, which people are telling us at some point it will happen, when people get more money. I was thinking, well, we won't have anywhere for these people, and that is quite a big unit. And there are always the complaints from retailers who want to come here, there is nothing of a suitable size.
I, I take on board all your comments. Um, but I'll just go back to the original, um, the request on the agenda, it's for a change of use. Um, I think that, uh, I will note all your comments, but I don't think it's worthy to put those comments through to the council, because personally, I think we're here just to, uh, accept or not the change of use. I personally think it would be a, a good proposition for Knights' Yard, because it is, it started off really well and it has lapsed, and I think that this would give you an increase in traffic. They have kept place down, church and buses way, very clean, tidy and very professional. So I don't think it will cause any sort of, um, change in aspects to, it's the new environment, should they move. So I would propose that we accept a change of use.
I'll second that.
All those in favour?
Are you against it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll vote against it, I'm against it a lot of view, yeah, I find it different.
It's up to you, it's up to you to decide.
You don't know, well, people know this on the council.
Item number four. Uh, proposed extension, an altar race in dwelling, dwellings on nine Hillbrook End. Everybody aware of the location and...
Can't see this from the front.
Right.
I'm visiting, we can't see anything from the road.
No.
So presumably it must be at the rear.
It's facing the factory, from what I can gather.
What's he wanting to do? Exactly.
Only this photo, that many giggle.
My friend though.
That's tremendous.
I think this is what it is.
I'm always impressed by architects of the modern day. Just ghastly. No offence to anyone who lived in my family, they were ghastly.
No, I totally agree with you. Horrible sense of honour. With few trees, it would be good.
Have you got the layout drawing?
Yes, what do you want to do about it, the extension, because they're all just oblong, angled up.
Locked on there.
That must be...
There's just, it sticks somewhere out the back, isn't it?
Yeah, there, I think.
That's, yeah.
It's a new story lounge.
Yeah, looks like it's there, and out the back, there.
Yeah, pitch roof, lounge, and out the back.
That's facing the back of...
That's facing RPC, yeah.
The way that planning is presented, there's a space between the houses, which there isn't in reality.
There isn't in reality, that's onto the, the boundary line.
What does that do on top of that, isn't it?
Yeah.
So in other words, it's right up against the neighbors.
The neighbours, possibly terrace townhouses.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the person, if that's facing RPC, the one on the right, kind of sun blocked out, or whatever. Certainly, certainly the afternoon. Yes, yeah, because the sun sets over the left, the left hand side, you're right.
Yeah. Blocking the sun for his neighbour to his, um...
To his right.
There must be any, there's not much detail, it's basically just there.
Yeah. Personally, I've got reservations with that, sign of it, way out there.
It's not right, because, you know, as Martin says, if you go up there, I mean, um, on the left hand side you've got one block, on the right hand side you've got the other block. And they're just a straight, everything's in line, you start sticking things out the back, it's going to, it is going to knock it out of balance, isn't it?
It will knock it out of balance, but it will lessen the light on the neighbours, on both sides, to it.
If you have two cars, you can buy the amount of traffic up there, or amount of four cars.
Very congested.
Yeah. I just don't like the concept, if, if you build, as Martin says, I'm not a great fan of bomb architecture, but if you build a block in that shape and style, if people start willing to be sticking bits out the back and whatnot, it'll ruin the actual line of the building, so I don't, much like it from that point, let alone losing the garage and all the neighbours, Martin.
Yeah, I accept that. Michael?
Uh, no, I was, I was listening, I mean, if you get a Georgian terrace that has the same situation as that's got, so the fact that it's normal or not, doesn't act, that, for the moment, to it, um...
Yeah, that's what we, we have the same situation up the road there, where people say that the lime tree is close to the building, but actually it's not, it's close to an extension, but that has been extended in various positions. I suppose, in a way, perhaps we shouldn't object as this is the rear, because no one else nearby is apparently objecting.
But would we know about that, if the neighbour had to?
Yes, it would be on line.
The only, what he meant is the highways, they would have been on here at the line.
There is no objection.
Maybe that's the, maybe that's the point then.
Thank you for pointing that out, I know that.
For me, that, um... Once one is done, presumably, do you make a best work of your, for anybody else not to do?
That is my... I know that, um, we say that just because one has been changed, it doesn't necessarily mean that, necessarily follow that the next one will do the same. But I'd, I'd take on, if this set precedent, but we don't work on precedence in planning. Um, realistically, I would go for a conservatory, which lets a little light outside. My personal view is that it's going to hinder light into both properties. Um, one on the left, one on the right.
I suppose, I suppose what they're trying to do is, if they did put a conservatory and then they converted upstairs to bedrooms, they would then lose some value, because they don't have a lounge. So I can see why they want a physical, solid building, because when it goes for resales, I mean, they've got a lounge and additional bedroom.
Hmm.
Too large. Just on the basis of it's too large, that's not, that's not the reasoning that you're... No, 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 I look at it from, from several points of view. I believe the highways, but I don't like the concept of losing the garage. I don't like the concept of sticking something out the back of a, a uniform, row of building, because you say, once you've done one, light's all over the place. I don't like the loss of light either, so there's a number of reasons, not any one of which is up to my mind, just the fact there are several reasons why I don't think it's right.
Okay, everybody happy to, if we conclude now, but I have somebody to propose, um, that we reject. Are we happy to all go with that, are we rejecting this? Yes?
Yeah, I think perhaps we should.
Grounds up.
Because I think actually a lot of that is unlike the High Street, unless you make an effort, this is visible. It is quite visible from footpath and things.
This is a loss of amenities, a loss of light, or something.
I don't know about control.
Yeah, it is, and it's obviously certainly visible from the factory, but it's also visible from the footpath and the other...
They're losing.
It is, right.
So...
There's probably a need, though, that's the difficult situation, because you can see all the play equipment, it's obviously a family need.
I, I accept that, however, I just feel that that building was built with a family in mind and also with neighbours in mind.
Yeah.
And in view of the fact that you have got neighbours on both sides, and the sun coming from the east, setting in the west, it's a north facing garden, so therefore the light is going to be very restricted. So on the grounds of that, I would propose that we reject this due to the fact that it will inhibit the light into the adjacent properties. That would be my proposal. Seconded by you, Michael, thank you. All those in favour?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Right, the next one, item five, extension of existing groundkeeper's shed, groundkeeper's buildings on Ashwell Road.
I didn't work out where this was, I didn't look at this. Is this the Oakland School?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the, it's one of the cricket places. It's, I think it's mainly cricket up there.
Where's the shit?
Uh, it's when you walk round the little, the back of the vets, is it?
Yeah, I think it's that side.
Around, it's at the end, so there's, you know there's an alleyway by the side of the vets?
Yeah.
And you, it's only a little alleyway, and then you walk, and then you walk, and then you walk, and then you come to the end. It's near, there are the colts over here, is it, or something?
No, no, no. We've got, we've got, we've got here, you see the, this, this is the bypass, isn't it?
It's like, it's like where the pavilion is.
No, the pavilion's up here, it's at the top. Ashwell Road goes off at sort of forty-five degrees.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
This is the bypass, there is a hedge between, um...
There is, no.
There's a fire down there, and basically, the, the guys wanted to go charging through the hedge, because they thought that was the only access. But you have to go up to the pavilion and drive down the side of it, and you power it out to, to burn your access. I believe that's where it is.
Yeah, I've got you. So it's a long way from the pavilion itself?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's, to be fair, it's out of view because of the...
Screen, isn't it?
There's a screen of the, the natural hedge that's there, um... It doesn't look very inspiring, no, but...
But at least it's low level, so we won't stick up a wall there.
Amazing sized shed.
That's what it is.
Put your lawnmower in.
My only concern is the, uh, due to the largeness of the building.
It's a lot of wood.
It's got fire separation because of the potential fireworks, I don't know, but obviously they will, um, be under the strict stringent...
So where's the existing shed? The one on the right, at the top? And there's everything else an extension to, that'd be it.
That's the existing, they want to extend it either end, as far as I can make out.
So that's existing.
There you go.
I don't, it is, it's just where they store all their tools and things, isn't it?
That's the real plan, as it is.
And grass up to the...
Is it?
So that's how we think, so that's it, and that's how we're doing it, okay. So...
Oh.
That's, so this is the existing roof plan, and this is the roof plan as proposed, so I'm assuming they mean all that as well?
Yeah. Right.
So it's quite good, isn't it?
It is.
Was there concern from Highway?
I don't think it was, was it? No, it wasn't. Highway was the good one for...
Right. Just to bring the profile from the side, it's extending the, uh, very far from the front. So that's what goes away. Any concerns, I'll start with Martin.
I, I don't really have concerns, apart from the fact that it's, it's a lot of tin book. It's, it's just basically, it's, um, it's a, it's a storage unit, isn't it, described as a shed? Actually, I wouldn't...
It's a big garage.
It's a very big one. And I don't think it's near any residential problems, you know, where people might not like a shed that big from their windows, I don't see it.
Does it say anywhere, wood?
I don't think it says, what is it, wood?
I'm just assuming shaded, but then it could be metal.
It could be another group, uh, I think it's more like...
Steel.
Yeah, it's a metal one.
Yes, a steel frame.
So it's not, it's not...
Steel sheets on us the roof.
It's not the...
No windows.
You can get metal sheds.
Steel cladding.
But it's...
Cladding, yeah, steel sheet cladding, it's steel.
It's, it's, it's a clap building with the corrugated green, I'm assuming, it's steel sheet.
It's a very small minor sort of industrials type unit.
Yeah, no concerns, I was going to say, I know...
I suppose there's a fire thing, it's steel.
No, it just wasn't inside it. Um, I've got no major concerns, going there.
All right, yeah.
Martin?
No, I don't have a problem, so we should propose...
Somebody would like to propose it for me?
No problems.
You proposing that?
If you'd like to.
Sorry. Martin proposed...
We don't have any issues unless you wanted to include something about your concerns with what's stored in it.
All those in favour?
Karen, thank you very much.
You do that probably under a separate hat, I imagine.
Yes, I'm not soliciting. Uh, item six, um, right, the proposal is for a single store rear extension and hit roof to replace existing flat roof from one bold and green close.
Right, it's this one here.
Now, this is an application by Mr. Richard Clifton. It has been confirmed as written that Mr. Clifton is Mr. Clifton who is on the county council. Also somebody that I've known for a nice considerable number of years. Uh, Martin has also declared an interest. Due to the fact that Mr. Clifton is on the county council, I would propose that we do not, um, discuss this agenda item and I would propose that we pass no comment as a committee, due to the fact that he's in the county council.
Why?
So that we do not, uh, we cannot be, um, accused of favoritism or, because this will go to a planning, a full planning meeting because of his position on council.
Yes, it's not allowed to be considered by planning staff, so it has to, it will get a fair hearing at a full committee meeting. But I don't, that, that doesn't preclude people from making comments if they want, but it, it's just a suggestion that's practiced.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion, it's not, we didn't have to.
But they could go if they wanted.
Yeah, it's just that I won't, and Martin won't.
It could be you two, I want.
It looks relatively, on paper, simple proposition, can we just have a look at the, it's intact, please? So he's currently got a flat roof at the moment, he just wants to put a.
Hit roof on.
Hit roof on.
That's the only stuff on the wall, I know it's not.
So it's not changing.
A single story rear extension and hit roof to replace existing flat roof.
So it's not in, uh, increasing the footprint of the house?
No.
It's replacing light, like apart from the fact it's going to, so.
Yeah.
Single, single story rear extension, no, it's, it was a full extension.
Hmm.
Oh, there we are, there's the proposed one, so, oh, I don't think it's up there.
No, it's extending the garage, sorry.
So that's what he wants to put on, there.
Extending the garage and then putting a hit roof on, on the base. So it's a minor increase to the footprint.
Wait, this chap, if you want to propose a second.
You?
Yeah.
I, I've just, if you want to.
No.
If you want to propose it.
So there's the, yeah, so there it is, but there's the existing bit.
Yeah.
And that's what they're going to add on to that.
Yeah.
And it's quite, and that backs out onto the bowl.
Old green.
So it's not even got anybody at the back, is it?
No.
Plus the fact that he's, he's set over the flat roof, he's going to pitch it past the roof, so aesthetically, it might look better.
Aesthetically and longevity of the, the roof personally, but.
No problem, Michael, you.
No.
I'll propose it.
Proposed by Paul, seconded by Michael, all those in favour? Two and two.
Extensions.
Yep. Thank you very much, now that now concludes, it is now eleven thirteen ish.